Well, good evening and welcome everyone. I'd like to now call the order, call to order, the May eighteenth, twenty twenty York County Regular Meeting of the York County School Board. And once again, we're meeting virtually due to the present circumstances. And I want to once again thank our IT Department and our video services for all their assistance with the meeting preparation and their work they're doing tonight for us. So we're going to start with the roll call of our board members who are each coming to you remotely. And they'll share their location. So Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes, Brett Higginbotham, District Two, from Yorktown, Virginia, two three six nine three.
And Ms. Gerolds?
Yes, Laurel Garlops, one hundred Leanne, Yorktown, Virginia, two three six nine two.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes, Mark Schaefer, one fifteen Catawba Court, Williamsburg, Virginia, two three one eight five.
Thank you. Mr. Myatt?
Sean Myatt, one zero five Kiskiak Turn, Yorktown, Virginia, two three six nine three.
And I'm James Richardson, District Four, from seven ten Shippoint Road, Yorktown, Virginia, two three six nine two. So now all board members are participating in this regular meeting remotely through the electronic communications pursuant to Resolution twenty dash nineteen that authorizes board meetings through electronic communications without physically assembled quorum and in accordance with the York County Ordinance twenty dash eleven during the pen and pendency, pendency ordinance of twenty dash eleven in the COVID nineteen. So the pandemic emergency, we're streaming live video of our meeting tonight through the Division YouTube channel and the YCSD TV for a regular meeting. So I'll now read the York County School Division Mission Statement. The mission statement of the York County School Division is to engage all students in acquiring the skills and knowledge needed to make productive contributions in the world. But I'd also like to mention now, too, that our meeting agenda and documents are available by logging into Board Docs through our YCSD website at yorkcountyschools.org. So next, I'd like to share some information regarding our pledge leaders tonight that opens our meeting. We actually have co-pledge leaders tonight, so we're excited to have that this evening. And I'll share a little bit about the first pledge leader, Blake Hill, fifth grade student at Mount Vernon Elementary. And then next, I'll share information about Elva Perez, another fifth grade student at Mount Vernon, about Vernon Elementary. So Blake Hill is a very kind-hearted fifth grade student at Mount Vernon Elementary School. He always tries his best, no matter the task. He is always willing to help others and adheres to classroom and school rules and expectations. Blake is overall a fantastic role model who consistently portrays the characteristics of a Mount Vernon Mustang, responsible, kind, safe, and ready to learn. No matter where he is in the building, Blake follows the rules and expectations with integrity. Blake cleans up after himself in the cafeteria, in the classroom, and after indoor recess while also assisting his fellow Mustangs. He also walks quietly in hallways and raises his hand patiently before being called one in class and always follows directions. Kindness is truly one of Blake's extraordinary traits. Blake goes out of his way to make sure that no one is left out or feeling blue. He always includes others at recess and makes an effort to cheer up a friend if they are sad. Blake is always willing to help his classmates by stacking their chairs at the end of the school day or lending a writing utensil to a friend. He also offers to help teachers with tasks such as passing out and collecting papers. Blake's work ethic is exceptional with everything he does. He always shows his work when completing math assignments and double checks his work before turning it in. Blake is never afraid to ask questions and takes his time when completing his work. Blake is a great friend and school citizen, which makes him a true example of what it means to be a Mustang. So next, we have who is a fifth grade student at Mount Vernon Elementary School. And she's a very responsible and truly embodies our Mustang traits of being responsible, kind, and safe. As she demonstrates these characteristics daily in the hallways, classrooms, resource rooms, and cafeteria, she sets an example for other students. Elva Perez is such a sweet young lady who greets teachers each morning and afternoon with a smile and kind words. Being polite is part of who she is and how she treats others. She doesn't draw attention to herself and she does what needs to be done. And she actively participates in class and does a great job on her work without reading, needing praise or attention. We can always count on her to do the right thing whether we are watching or not. Every day, she does what needs, what needs to do with a sweet disposition. She knows true kindness and compassion to her classmates. Elva is not only a great friend, but a great student, and has been true pleasure, a true pleasure to help Elva in our classes. And we are more than proud to have her as the pledge leader this month. And she is a true representation of a proud Mustang, and we are so lucky to have her as part of the Mount Vernon Mustang team.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, Blake and Elva. That was wonderful. So now we're going to move into our seniors of the month, and they're being recognized for their achievements. And our first senior of the month is from Bruton High School. And Mr. Schaefer, you have the first.
Yes, yes. We are honored to bring Paige Brotherton to you tonight. Paige is the daughter of Mr. and Mrs. Peter and Dawn Brotherton from Bruton High School. Leadership has been Paige Brotherton's unwavering contribution to Bruton High School. John Maxwell describes a leader as one who knows the way, goes the way, and shows the way. Paige has been reliable and adaptable when leading her peers. We are proud to honor Paige Brotherton as our Class of Twenty Twenty Valedictorian, as she has earned a four point eight three three grade point average, as well as her charismatic nature and her genuine care for others, especially her classmates. That's what she attributes her academic success to. Paige has received numerous academic awards, including highest academic honors all four years, and several Students of the Year Awards in Advanced English Ten, AP European History, AP Computer Science, Math Analysis, and Spanish Four. She has served as President of the SCA, Assistant Director for SOA Productions, Vice President of Spanish Honor Society, and President of the Math Honor Society. Paige has been a member of the Bruton Varsity Indoor Track Team for two years and qualified as a top ten runner in the state with a fifty-five meter hurdles. She also participated in Williamsburg Boat Club Crew and Rowing Team and competed for a national championship in two thousand seventeen. We are proud of Paige's accomplishments and celebrate her success as she leaves Bruton to continue her settings at you, at the University of Pennsylvania, the Wharton School of Business, to major in finance or statistics. Congratulations, Paige.
Wonderful write-up on Paige. Thank you, Mr. Schaefer. Now we're going to move on to Grafton High School and Mr. Higginbotham.
Yes, it is my pleasure to read about Chelsea Wang, the daughter of Mr. and Mrs. Dong Highway. It gives me great pleasure to honor Chelsea Wang as Grafton's May Senior of the Month. Chelsea's intelligence, respectfulness, and dedication to her academics and extracurricular activities have definitely prepared her for her future goals, as well as serving as a role model for our fellow Clippers. Chelsea has excelled in all areas of her academics. By the time she completes high school, she will have taken twenty-four honors in advanced placement courses. She's ranked first out of a senior class of two hundred and eighty-nine with a four point eight seven GPA. Chelsea has received all A's and continues to earn the highest honors every quarter. In addition to courses taken at Grafton High School, Chelsea also attends the Governor's School for Science and Technology at New Horizons Regional Education, Educational Center, where she has attended since her junior year. She selected the Biological Science Strand where she has gained valuable information in both science and associated career fields. Chelsea describes herself as inquisitive, meticulous, and empathetic. In light of her demanding course load, Chelsea also participates in extracurricular activities and gives her time to her community. Chelsea is a member of the National Honor Society, Mu Alpha Theta, the Math Honor Society, Science Honor Society, Spanish Honor Society, Special Olympics Club, Debate Team, and Key Club. She also has a mentorship at Hampton University with an assistant professor in biology, where she is learning how to properly perform research and conduct a scientific study. Outside of school, Chelsea volunteers at the Virginia Living Museum and the Children's Hospital of the King's Daughters. She enjoys helping others and would like to continue her community service while in college. Chelsea's dedication and commitment are like no other, and she will continue to find success in her collegiate studies. Chelsea is truly a standout individual who impresses everyone she meets, and we are so honored to recognize Chelsea as Grafton Senior of the Month. Congratulations, Chelsea.
Thank you. What a wonderful young lady. Thank you, Mr. Higginbotham. And we're going to move on to TAB High School. Mr. Myatt?
Absolutely. It's my pleasure to introduce the TAB High School Senior of the Month for May, Marcus Sanders, son of Michael and Kathy Sanders. Marcus is an outstanding student and exceptional leader at TAB High School. He has maintained nearly straight A's while completing a very demanding course load, including seven advanced placement classes. Marcus is also the commanding officer of TAB's Navy Junior ROTC Unit, placing him in charge of over one hundred cadets. Even with recent challenges, Marcus has remained an active leader working virtually with the ROTC staff. He recently spearheaded the unit's community service initiative, sending donations to a local charity for residents impacted by the COVID virus. Active in many areas, Marcus has been an athlete in multiple sports, including wrestling, cross-country, and lacrosse. In addition, he is a member of numerous honor societies and organizations at the high school and is responsible for establishing programs to serve the extracurricular needs of students in leadership. Marcus has completed community service on a regular basis through several organizations, including the school, Riverside Hospital, and Navy Junior ROTC. He is a natural leader who selflessly gives for the benefit of others. Last summer, those characteristics were recognized by the school faculty when Marcus was nominated to represent TAB at Virginia Voice State. His outstanding achievement, service, and leadership skills have resulted in an appointment to the United States Air Force Academy at Colorado Springs. There is no doubt that Marcus will serve our country with all the resolve and dedication that he has shown during his time at TAB High School. We are proud to have served as his training ground for such a fine young man, and it's our pleasure to present Marcus as the TAB High School Senior of the Month and thank him for his inspirational leadership and exceptional personal example. Thank you, Marcus.
Thank you, Mr. Myatt. And what a great write-up for Marcus. I know his parents are proud, and I know we're proud. So we're going to move on to York High School. And Ms. Gerolds?
I'm honored to celebrate Jennifer Lynn, the daughter and of John and Vanessa Lynn. York High School is happy to announce Jennifer Lynn is our May Senior of the Month. Jennifer is an awesome student, gifted artist, and talented musician. Jennifer has excelled as a student in the International Bachelor Laureate Program. She has received highest academic honors for the past three years and ranks in the top of her class. Due to her academic success, she holds membership in Mu Alpha Theta Math Honor Society, National Science Honor Society, Spanish National Honor Society, and National Art Honor Society. Jennifer has a strong interest in the STEM field and has participated in many events and programs. This year, she participated in the sixty-eighth Annual Tidewater Science and Engineering Fair and the York County Science Fair, where she placed third in both events. She was also awarded the Outstanding Science Student Award by the Engineers Club of the Virginia Peninsula. Jennifer served as President of Creative Writing Club her sophomore year and Treasurer of the National Honor Society last year. She has continued to grow as a leader by serving on the York County Board of Supervisors Youth Commission. Jennifer also had the honor of performing second violin in the York River Orchestra and the York Peninsula International Orchestra. Congratulations, Jennifer. We wish you all the best.
Thank you, Ms. Gerolds. And it's always great to hear the accomplishments of these, these seniors. It's, it's just, they're just, it's amazing, some of the things you hear about them. So I have the last one, and it's from York River Academy, and it's Ethan Woodman. The parents are Keith and Lisa Woodman. And Ethan Woodman is overwhelmingly unanimous choice as the Senior of the Year for York River Academy. Because it's been such a remarkable school year for everyone. When presenting reasons to support their recommendation for Ethan, everyone begins their discussion with the description of Ethan's incredible work ethic. That work ethic is displayed in every aspect of Ethan's high school career. It's a simple matter to calculate Ethan's GPA because he has maintained straight A average for his time in high school. Ethan has worked diligently to confront and overcome difficulties in his academic career, applying himself to the work and continuing to persevere with whatever it took to accomplish the task and achieve the goals. Ethan not only accomplished his personal instructional goals, but by his participation in the classes, he furthered the success of the entire class through his discussion, example, and dedication. Teachers and other students benefited from Ethan's participation in his classes. One of the many examples of Ethan's impact on YRA is his involvement in the Greenhouse Project from its inception. The sponsor of the Greenhouse Project had this to say about Ethan. He was our products leader and created full operational spreadsheet with color-coded incoming and outgoing expenses. He took his role as a teacher seriously and worked well with the elementary school students. He was a leader by example and took on many leadership roles as well. He always strived for excellence and looked for feedback to improve his work. He also never forgot to smile. Even after schedule changes and new challenges caused him to move on from the greenhouse, he continued to provide accounting expertise and consultation to students and staff alike. Ethan was also very active in the community, having several part-time jobs during his time at YRA and also being the first student in our history to complete an extensive internship with Ferguson. He brought to that setting his accounting, business skills, and interest, and was commended for his hard work and skills. Ethan has set his eye on accounting and business future direction and will be attending Thomas Nelson Community College in the fall. We know that Ethan will accomplish great things. Congratulations, Ethan. Wonderful. So now we're going to move on to our business part of our meeting. And unfinished business, we have none, but we're going to go next to our capital projects report. And Dr. Shandor, if you would, please share some comments before we move into that report.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Good evening, members. This evening's capital project, projects report, Dr. Jim Carroll, our Chief Operations Officer, and Mr. Mark Sheerhart, Associate Director for Capital Plans are going to prevent information related to our capital projects. So I'll turn it over to Dr. Carroll.
Thank you, Dr. Thank you, Dr. Shandor, members of the board, Chairman Richardson. As you know, we've been talking over the last few weeks in one-to-one meetings and public meetings about where we're at with capital projects. You'll remember that we've talked about maximizing those dollars that we have for this year, finishing those projects that were, that were under the phase, finishing them at the phase that they're in right now. So if it's a construction project, finishing the construction, if it's in the A and E phase, then finishing that phase that we're in, and then holding the, holding the project at that point, unless it was a safety, issue of a safety project. So we've reviewed that in the past, and that's how we'll continue. And then any other projects that were left or continuations of those phases will be pushed out to out-years because of the allocation of only one million dollars for next year, which will be focused purely on portable classrooms to make sure that we are prepared for any growth that may come. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Sheerhart. He's going to talk to you about progress, where we're at in current projects at Dare Coventry and the Grafton School Complex. And then I'll return at the end to talk about the fire restoration at the Grafton School Complex and the progress we've been making there. So at this point, I'll turn it over to Mr. Sheerhart.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and Dr. Shandor. This evening, I'll be reviewing three separate capital projects, the Dare Elementary Breezeway Enclosure, Coventry Elementary HVAC Replacement, and the Grafton Complex HVAC Replacement. The first project is Dare Elementary School Breezeway Enclosure. The Dare Elementary Breezeway Enclosure is ninety-eight percent complete with only two items remaining. Last Friday, the contractor installed sod in front of the building. This, and the scheduled final completion date is June fifth. We believe that the contractor will be, be done well ahead of that date. Here is what the building looked like back in February during my last presentation. And here is what it looks like on May sixth. This is a picture of what the interior of the Breezeway looks like. In front of you is a ramp for ADA access. At the top of the ramp is a door leading out to the blacktop for recess. Behind the doors on the left are two small breakout spaces for small group instruction and a conference room. Behind the blue wall at the back of the slide is a small office. The wide hallways and whiteboards installed on the hallway walls provide space for informal seating and additional small group instruction. The next project is Coventry Elementary School HVAC Replacement. This project kicked off early on May eleventh since the school was closed, and the contractor has rapidly removed the classroom ceilings, light fixtures, and HVAC systems. On this drawing of the school, you can see the three highlighted areas where the ceilings, lighting, and HVAC systems are being replaced during this twenty twenty project. The HVAC systems for this, for the part of the school in white were replaced in two thousand and thirteen. Here's an example of what the classrooms looked like just prior to the demolition on May eleventh. And just a few days later, the contractors had the ceilings, lighting, and HVAC systems removed from four classrooms with the other eight classrooms in various stages of demolition. The last project for this evening is the second phase of the Grafton Complex HVAC Project. Contractors have also been very busy at Grafton Complex in the middle school side of the building and in the high school band room. Electricians have been replacing light fixtures, while HVAC technicians have been busy dismantling, removing, and replacing heat pumps, piping, ductwork, and other equipment. Here is a picture of the high school band room during demolition. They are removing the entire ceiling, lights, and the HVAC system ductwork. This is a picture of the third floor mechanical space of the middle school after all of the heat pumps and some of the ductwork has been removed. In this picture, the HVAC company is using a large crane to remove the old HVAC equipment from the third floor of the middle school through a hole in the roof. Just one day later, the contractors are already beginning to install the new HVAC equipment using the same crane. Since the schools have been closed, all the contractors' work has been able to, all the contractors have been able to start work early, and the, and all work is scheduled to be completed by August fifteenth. Do you have any questions for me this evening?
This is Sean Myatt. I just have one quick comment. I knew that they were going to make the Breezeway multi-use, but I didn't envision the, the small breakout areas as well as a little additional room for seating. So to make a multi-use area like that, again, I want to commend the team. Good design, and that's great. Thank you.
Hey, Dr. Carroll?
Great. So yes, so we'll move along to where we're at with the rest of the, of the Grafton Complex. And we have some additional slides there if we can get those queued up. So as Mark said, we've been able to move forward on the construction that was already planned, but to back up a little bit, so you remember that we were expecting that main switchgear, and that has been put in place. You'll remember that there was a COVID-related delay in half of the circuit breakers. Those showed up last week, per Eaton's promise, they're on time, and they, they've been installed. It's in there, but they're not hooked up to the electricity. The board will also remember that we, that we hired a commissioning agent to inspect the installation before electric is put to that board. And so that work started today, should finish up by Wednesday, and then we will start a circuit-by-circuit energizing of the building. And at that point, then we'll be able to diagnose if there are any issues with building-related systems. Also, Dominion installed a new transformer, and that's connected to, and ready to be connected to the switchboard. And, and then the electricians are removing all the damaged lights, and I believe we have some pictures that follow. Here is the, the transformer being brought in from Dominion. And there it is, installed, ready to go. And that was on May eleventh. There's your switchgear there with everything all in place, just ready to be hooked up for the, for, for energizing the building. And that completes my report and also ready to take any questions you may have about Grafton.
So just one, Dr. Carroll, the exact date that power will be on, at least to the air-condition units, because I know there's an issue when the heat starts around here with mold and that sort of thing to keep the air moving through the schools?
Right. So I can't give you an exact date because it'll be a one circuit by one circuit kind of creep through the process. But I believe that's going to start on Wednesday. Mark, that should take a week or so, pending no, no difficulties, correct?
I would think it may be as long as two weeks. We just don't know how much equipment has been affected by what happened to the electrical system there.
Okay. Go, still good timing to get it done in the next week or two. So that's good timing, though. Thank you.
Yes, and you'll remember that if we had, if COVID hadn't been a problem, we would have had these circuit breakers in over two weeks ago.
Right.
And so our original plan was to be putting electricity on the building before May thirtieth. We would have made that date, and then we had until May twenty-sixth to get back in the building. So right now, we would have been, we would have been on that kind of pace if we hadn't had the COVID delay. So hopefully, we can keep the pace up, that we don't run into any mechanical issues or significant electronic issues, so that won't delay us getting the air conditioning on, just for the purpose that you, you mentioned, Chairman.
Thank you. Any other questions from board members? Comments? Okay. All right, we're going to move on. That was it for the capital projects report, correct?
Correct. All right. Thank you, Dr. Carroll and Mr. Sheerhart.
Yeah, thank you for that report. I appreciate all the work you put into that. We're going to move on to our public hearing process, and this has to do with the school board salaries for FY twenty twenty-one. It's something the board does every year. The board can only change salaries on an election year, so last year would have been the year if the board had decided to change the salaries, would have, would have changed them to increase them. So a legal advertisement sharing the information about the public hearing process was published in the Daily Press on April twenty-eighth and May eighth. The resolution was also posted on Board Docs for public viewing, and I'll now share additional details. On Monday, May eighteenth, at five PM or soon, as soon thereafter as the matter may be heard, the school board for York County, Virginia, will conduct a public hearing through real-time electronic means without a quorum physically present at one location. A presentation of the following resolution will be made on May eighteenth, twenty twenty. A resolution to continue the salaries of members of the York County School Board, County School Board for York County, Virginia, and the sum of nine thousand per annum, annual, and plus an additional salary of one thousand two hundred for the board chair, and additional sum of six hundred for the board vice chair effective July one. and additional sum of six hundred for the board vice chair effective July 1, 2020. This reauthorization of the board salary amounts as pursuant to Code Section of Virginia 15.2-1414.3. There's been no increase in the salaries for the members of the school board of York County, Virginia since 2005 and none is proposed for 2021 fiscal year. A copy of the above-proposed resolution may be viewed on the school division's website. Public comment will be solicited by electronic means in advance of the final board action of the resolution on June 1st, 2020. Comments can be made through email through the presentation of the resolution at tonight's meeting. And any person wishing to be heard concerning this matter should email the clerk of the board at sford@ycsd.york.vaa.us between May 18th, 2020 and May 24th, 2020. All public comments will be provided to the board members prior to the action taken and made part of the record. So we've done that. So we're going to move on to public participation at board meetings. And again, we did the same criteria as we did at our last board meeting that we use for sharing public comments. So this information was emailed to all families, posted on the Facebook, Twitter, and posted on the daily, on the division website on the coronavirus page in the communication section. They, that the meeting would be live streamed on YouTube on TV 47 and per school board policy, public comment will be accepted as part of the meeting. Citizens can address the board by leaving a recorded voicemail at the following number, and the number was 757-833-7127, beginning at noon on Friday, May 15th. And the public comment phone line will close at 2:00 PM. And to provide public comment, you call the number between the hours of 12 and 2 Friday, May 15th, 2020. State your name and address, followed by your comments addressed to the school board. The school board rules of procedure allow for one comment per person. It may be no more than three minutes in length and then more than thirty minutes total allocated for the comments. This thirty-minute period may be extended by, at the chair's discretion. The chair reserves discretionary authority to rule a speaker out of order. I don't know how many comments we had on the, on the comment period. Ms. Ward, do you know how many comments we had?
Yes, sir. I believe we had three this time.
Okay. So now we're going to move into the public comment and we're going to play the three comments that were submitted by citizens.
Melissa Wade, 111 Hidden Lane, CCR Virginia, 23696. One of the nice things about public comments is that the YCSD school board members and the superintendent and the public can recognize the work of students and staff. The seniors of the month, student projects included on action on academics, and many awards accolades staff have received have been announced and celebrated. Even during the COVID closure, YCSD has provided the opportunity to make public comments and share good news about the divisions. I also have some excellent news to share with you and I hope you'll join me congratulating Carol Bauer, a nationally board certified teacher at Grafton Festival Elementary, who has been elected as the next Vice President of the Virginia Education Association. Carol has been with York County for twenty-four years and during that time has been recognized as Teacher of the Year on multiple occasions, as well as being selected as one of five National Horseman Teaching Excellence Awards of $10,000. She has served on two different governors' educational task force and has been asked to help develop policy with the Virginia Department of Education. York County and York Education Association are honored and privileged to call her one of her own. The Virginia Education Association will be supplying funds for this position and will cover all expenses to hire an additional teacher to be in the classroom to help Carol with her teaching endeavors. With the COVID exposure, closure, and so many unknowns for the next school year, it will be a real benefit for York County to have someone who will bring York County School Division's point of view to the table as we move forward. Again, please join me congratulating Carol Bauer on its remarkable achievements. Thank you. Have a great day.
Hello, my name is Melissa Wade, Assistant Orchard. Thank you all for all of your hard work. It's been a very challenging year and really appreciate the hard work on behalf of our students and our schools. I trust that the board is going to be following medical guidelines and will come up with a solid plan superstitious for the general course correction. And I urge you to also consider extracurricular resources and clubs and activities to be continued in some way. As sad as it was for graduating seniors to lose their opportunities, our rising seniors have waited years for their senior privileges and pioneering experiences. So let's maintain them even if they need to look a little different. And it will allow for continuity to bring new members in as our other members graduate. This may require a long different technology previously not used by YCSD, such as Zoom or FaceTime, which are working on platforms that enable real-time interaction, such as for chorus singers and others at high transmission risk. So those things could be used not only for chorus but for other class activities. So thank you for putting this on the radar and thank you again for all of your hard work on behalf of our students.
Hello, my name is Carol Bauer. I reside at 314 Brookway, Yorktown, Virginia. Good evening, Chairman Richardson, school board members, Dr. Shandor, senior staff, and the listening public. Thank you for the opportunity to share with you comments on your agenda. I appreciate the effort you have gone through to make public remarks part of your meeting, even the spiritual environment that we are in currently. On your agenda tonight is Action Item 12E, a motion to approve a resolution to enter into a four-year lease for technology for a one-to-one device for students. Unfortunately, at the time of these comments, I was unable to find the answers to certain questions. The drastic change from three or fewer computers in an elementary classroom to a one-to-one student-to-device model is a huge step for both students and staff. While the COVID school closing has dramatically shown that there is a need for additional technology in YCSD, a four-year lease in these uncertain economic times is waiting and significant and deserves close inspection. There is not a number associated with the lease as listed in the agenda, but action will be taken to once again freeze the salaries of staff. Added to that is the increase in culture that will cause many staff to have less pay comp pay this next year. Since the last recession in 2008, schools and salaries have not fully recovered financially. I'm asking you to clearly explain and articulate why entering a four-year lease for technology is being prioritized over salaries for staff who are doing more at all hours of the day and night than ever before. As I stated before, the COVID closing of schools has put a spotlight on the need for additional technology in YCSD. Without an explanation of the numbers and the financial impact, it is difficult to understand the recommendation at the expense of salaries and additional staff at this time for overcrowded classrooms and overscheduled and overburdened special ed staff. On a personal note, I am hopeful that you will continue your support of staff for their professional endeavors as you have done in the past, recognizing achievements and accomplishments. I certainly appreciate the comments of YEA president Melissa Wade. I am indeed excited to have been elected Vice President of the Virginia Education Association. I am looking forward to exciting new things and sharing the news that along with my position is good financial news for an additional licensed staff position for YCSD at no cost to the division. I'm looking forward to great things next year. Thank you.
All right, that was our three public comments. So thank you for those comments from those individuals that took the time to make those comments. So now we're going to move on to matters by board members and I'll ask each board member for any comments they may or may not have. So we'll move through and Ms. Gerrots, you're first up. Sorry to mean to put you on the spot.
It's all right. Thank you so much, Mr. Richardson. I just want to say that, you know, we can't be in the schools right now celebrating all the great things our students and our teachers and our staff are doing. But it's been great to just be on media, watch some of the things that are happening. Just a great way for us to feel connected as board members. So I'm really, really grateful for that and thank you to everybody who's been posting all the things you're doing. I also want to say that it's Mental Health Awareness Month and I know the division has a lot of resources on their website. So I encourage families to go check those out. And there's a lot of great links in there as well. And I'm also looking forward to celebrating our Class of 2020 seniors in the coming weeks and all the senior week activities. So I'm looking forward to that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gerrots. Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes, as Ms. Gerroth said, you know, there's not the opportunity to get into the buildings, but I was, I was able to go visit the Grafton High School and Tav High School Senior of the Month for April and sort of surprise them at their house. And it was fun to see them and their families and to celebrate, you know, with them from a respectable distance. But it was nice to be able to have that contact. I also want to thank Ms. Parr and the food service staff for providing so many meals over the last, you know, eight to ten weeks as we've had the closure and preparing them and the process of passing them out. I know it's a great service to the students and the families and it takes away some of that stress that might be at home for those. And I just want to give a huge shout out to everyone involved in all of that. And I would also like to encourage the students and the teachers and staff and the parents to finish this year strong. It's definitely not been the year anyone expected or wanted, but everyone has been resilient in all of the situations that we've had to go through and they've adapted and we are overcoming those difficulties. And I just want to encourage everybody that these last few weeks, you know, you know, keep pushing and finish strong. And you're going to reap all the rewards and congratulations to the groundbreaking Class of 2020 we're going to have this year.
Thank you, Mr. Higginbotham. Appreciate those comments. And we're going to move on to Mr. Myatt.
Yeah, sure. We'll continue our focus on the Class of 2020. I wanted to also acknowledge how much I enjoy the Senior of the Month visits and of course, we're coming up on those here for May. And a shout out to the TAB Athletic Booster Club, which procured and placed yard signs, recognizing our graduating seniors, I think was a very nice surprise. Obviously, it's very well deserved. So again, a shout out to the Booster Club. Again, nice, nice job. As Mr. Higginbotham mentioned, I think we crossed over, if I'm, if I'm correct, a hundred thousand meals. Does that sound right?
That's correct.
Chairman, that's, that's, that's remarkable. And I saw that, that you were present with Dr. Shandor and others to recognize the team. And yeah, hats off to the entire group, particularly Cheryl Parr. That's just amazing. Then one quick final comment. Take this opportunity to thank personally the division to recognize Dr. Butler for his efforts overseeing the 2020 commencement committee. Standing up the committee allowed students and parents and staff the opportunity to participate in the very important process. And in addition, the division survey of our graduating seniors and their families gave them a voice in the process as we were making decisions on the commencement options. And the feedback I received here within the district in regard to the process is that it was meaningful and much appreciated. So I wanted to again thank the division superintendent and particularly Dr. Butler. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Myatt. And next, Mr. Schaefer.
Yes. While we couldn't be in the schools, I was able to attend last Friday night, virtually, the 2020 School of the Arts Cafe. Now, they did it really interesting this year. I tell you what, we might not be seeing it, but the kids are definitely working hard. There was thirty-nine video events in this production from the introduction to the end. And, and it included music, it included poetry, humor. Well, I say humor, they were puns, but they were still good. And as well as a couple of very charismatic MCs that led you through it. There was excellent videos and readings by students. There was even a dark section where they said that viewer discretion was advised and it was for mature viewers. And, and it delved into some heartfelt areas that the students presented. It was an excellent time and I will tell you that it is still available on YouTube, all thirty-nine of them. And I'd just like to thank Laura Manning for the excellent job that the School of the Arts has done. Productions this year have been phenomenal. And I tell you what, for a virtual show, this was excellent. That was last Friday night. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schaefer. And I'm glad you brought that up and mentioned that. I'd forgotten that. I didn't make it that night on Friday, but I started watching the YouTube and I've seen a couple pieces of it. I haven't seen the whole thing yet. So I'm looking forward to going back and watching that. So thank you for that. And all the members are right, there's not a lot of opportunity for us to get into the schools like we normally would. This is a trying time. It's much different than, than normal. It's just new. So I was able to go out when we did the recognition for some of our employees for the hundred thousand meals served and accolades to them, Cheryl Parr, and really accolades to all of our whole team and the whole division, all the way from our janitors, all the way up to the superintendent. Everybody's working hard. They're putting in extra hours. They're putting in a lot of work and we do appreciate the work they're doing. Even though you may not see it from school board members, we are behind the scenes. We're doing one-to-ones with the superintendent. We've been doing them every other week, sometimes every week. Me more so than the other board members as chair. And as you become chair throughout the years, you'll see that too. And you'll, you'll be just as involved as well. You know, there'll just be forms you'll have to sign and different things like that. But we are staying involved. We're behind the scenes. I know that the team has been working on the graduation and we appreciate that. And I appreciate the way they incorporated staff, students, parents to help formulate some of those decisions. So all the, all the feedback I've gotten has been positive thus far on all that. And I know y'all have been working on a plan maybe for reopening school that you already got a committee at least for that. Of course, we don't know any information on that. I mean, things change daily. Good grief. It's if you put out a plan now, it's going to change fifty-two times, I'm sure, between now and the beginning of school. But thank you for all the hard work and that's pretty much my comments for this evening. So thank you. So now we're going to move on to financial matters. And Ms. Gerrots, you have financial matters. You're up.
I, I do. Thank you very much. Consideration of approval of payment. We have claims certified for payment for the month of April, 2020. Significant expenditures for April. Instructional-related expenditures totaling approximately one hundred eighty-two thousand and include payments to New Horizon, one hundred, one hundred and thirty-eight thousand nine hundred. Amtech Company, eighteen thousand six hundred for four 3D printers. Fiat Box, thirteen thousand one hundred for translation services for the program of studies. To teach, ten thousand five hundred for professional development services. Payments for technology-related items totaling approximately two hundred and thirteen thousand one hundred and fifty dollars included payments to ACES, forty-six thousand one hundred and nineteen for new building automation system at Grafton Complex. Apple, thirty thousand nine hundred and sixty for one hundred and twenty iPads for DSDM activities. Computer discount warehouse, twenty-nine thousand seven hundred and twenty-five for enterprise vault manager. Electronic systems, twenty-eight thousand nine hundred and fourteen for wireless LAN controllers. E-rate, twenty-one thousand two hundred for E-rate consulting for FY 20. Cox Communications, thirty-eight thousand four hundred and eighty-eight for Ethernet and Internet services. Virginia Business Systems, seventeen thousand four hundred and forty-two for copier services. Payments related administration totaled eleven thousand and included a payment to VA Corp. or VA Corp. for workers' comp expenses. Payments related to food service totaled one hundred and eighty-four thousand one hundred and included payments to Sedexo, one hundred and seventy thousand seven hundred for food service operations. USDA, thirteen thousand four hundred for food supplies. Payments related to operating maintenance totaled twenty thousand four hundred and included payments to Carrier Systems, fifteen thousand for HVAC parts and supplies. Dominion Power, thirty-six thousand three hundred for utilities. Payments related to capital projects totaled nine hundred and fifteen thousand one hundred and included payments to Heartland Construction, four hundred and eighty-four thousand nine hundred and fifty for work at the Grafton Complex. Forms and supply, one hundred and sixty-three thousand five hundred for furniture at YHS Learning Commons. Comfort Systems, one hundred and seventy-four thousand seven hundred for HVAC work at Coventry Elementary. Protectso, ninety-one thousand nine hundred for work at Dare Elementary. Move on to consideration of approval for financial reports for April, 2020. Significant changes relating to the operating budget. For April revenues, local revenue through April, 2020 is up by more than two hundred and two thousand because of a result of the two hundred and fifty thousand payment for our insurance company related to the Grafton Complex fire. State revenue through April, 2020 is up more than two point two million when compared to April, 2019. The increase is due to approved state funding increases for FY 20 and increases in student enrollment. For expenditures, instructional expenditures are approximately two point nine million higher in April than in 2019. This is due to the increase in instructional and support staff required for growth and the staff compensation increase for FY 20. Significant changes related to the food service budget for expenditures and revenues and expenditures. Food service revenue through April, 2020 has decreased by approximately one hundred and six thousand dollars when compared to April, 2019. The decrease in revenue is a result from the closure of schools. Food service expenditures are approximately ninety-six thousand dollars less in April, 2020 than in 2019. The decrease in expenditures is also a result from the school closures. See, consideration of approval of Resolution 20-21, a resolution authorizing a specific procurement. Resolution 20-21 requires the board's approval, authorizing procurements of more than fifty thousand dollars. There are thirty- There are 31 items on the resolution for approval. Mr. Chairman, I now move to approve financial matters as listed.
Thank you, Ms. Gerroth. Is there a second to that motion?
I second.
All right, Mr. Higginbotham. Thank you, Ms. Ford.
Yes, a motion is made by Mrs. Gerroth and seconded by Mr. Higginbotham to approve financial matters as listed. Mr. Myatt?
Yes.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mrs. Garoff?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
And Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Yes, the motion passed five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ford. Uh, now we're going to move on to our consent calendar. I'm going to briefly go over the listed items. Uh, hopefully every board member's had a chance to see them in board docs. Um, and that is the approval of personnel actions, the approval of donations in the amount of 9,035 dollars. Uh, the approval of nomination of submission for the Virginia School Boards Association Award. Approval to authorize the division superintendent to execute the 11th annual addendum to the facility operating agreement between the York County School Board of York County, Virginia and the Boys and Girls Club of Virginia Peninsula, a Virginia non-stock corporation. Approval of Resolution 2 dash 22, a resolution to approve the FY property and liability insurance coverage. Approval of the meal prices for the school year 2020, 2021, which we did uh went over at our work session. Approval of Resolution 20 dash 23, resolution authorizing the school board chair, division superintendent and high school principals to apply for membership with the Virginia High School League for the school year 2020, 2021. And the approval of minutes from the emergency meeting and a special meeting, April 22nd, 2020 and the work session on May 4th, 2020. So is there anything from the consent calendar that any member would like to pull?
Hearing none, we're going to ask for approval of the consent calendars listed. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the uh consent calendar as listed.
All right, a second?
No, we'll. Second.
There you go.
Okay, Ms. Ford?
Yes, a motion was made by Mr. Higginbotham and seconded by Mrs. Garoff to approve the consent calendar as listed. Mr. Myatt?
Yes.
Miss Garoff?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
And Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
The motion passed five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ford. Um, now we're going to move on to several resolutions and uh items that need uh need approval. And there's going to be some presentations, I believe, as we go along. We have uh several tonight. Or we're going to start with the first one on A, uh 12A, consideration of approval of Resolution 20 dash 24, amending the fiscal year 2021 school board approved operating budget because we'd already approved that budget. Uh, this is an amendment. So Dr. Shandor, I'll ask you to share comments about this item.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Again, good evening, board members. When we began the budget process in the fall, the governor released his budget in December. Y C S D, like many other school divisions, were looking at significant investments in K-12 from both the state and local governments. When the General Assembly completed its work in March, Y C S D was going to receive another $900,000. In mid-March, in response to the pandemic, the governor announced closures for specific sectors of the economy. This action has had a direct impact on state and local revenues. The state has acknowledged this and cautioned schools to monitor sales tax revenues and lottery revenues to the remainder of 20, of FY 2020. In response to this new economy, the governor and General Assembly took actions to reverse a number of budget actions included and approved for the FY 21 budget, including the state's 2% compensation increase. In addition, the county had to eliminate our increase of 1.1 million in the proposed FY 21, as well as cut an additional $500,000 in the current budget. In a letter dated April 22nd, the governor stated, "The General Assembly will reconvene later this summer to adjust the state budget when the economic and financial impacts of the pandemic become clear." We have adjusted this budget to account for the loss of revenue, revisions to student enrollment and attrition, and to address new priorities such as remediation and a vir- and virtual instruction. We don't expect this to be the final version of the FY 21 budget. It may be necessary for additional budgetary action once the General Assembly reconvenes this summer and convenes during the 2021 General Assembly session. Now, it could be that the negative economic impact could be temporary. The governor has stated that if he has the, if the funds are available, he would like to restore the compensation increase. Finally, this has been a very difficult and complicated year for K-12 budgets. We lost funds and we had to modify priorities to address these new challenges. I appreciate the time the board has spent with our team over the last few weeks, providing feedback and, and asking very thoughtful questions related to this budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Shandor. Any other comments or questions from board members?
I just want to say thank you so much for um your team uh for being available to answer all of our questions. I know we, you asked, we, we asked a lot of questions in the initial round and we've definitely asked even more in the secondary round. And while it's not a budget system we want to be doing right now, um we understand why, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gerroth. So is there a motion and a second to approve the Resolution 20 dash 24, amending the fiscal year 2021 school board approved operating budget?
I make motion to approve the Resolution 20 dash 24 in the fiscal 2021 school approved operating budget.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Myatt and Ms. Ford.
Yes, a motion was made by Mr. Schaefer and seconded by Mr. Myatt to approve Resolution 20 dash 24. Miss Garoff?
Yes.
Mr. Myatt?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
And Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion passed five to zero.
Thank you, Ms. Ford. And next we have the um approval of Resolution 20 dash 25 for the County School Board of York County, Virginia to approve the division superintendent's revised fiscal year 2021 capital improvement uh program budget. So Dr. Shandor, if you'd like to share briefly on that.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Richardson. As you know, we've shared information with the board along the way as we've worked through, obviously, the operating budget. But we've also shared a lot of information related to the capital uh projects, uh the, I'm sorry, the CIP, the Capital Improvement Project. Dr. Carroll also alluded to earlier what that number uh is going to be for next year. I'll just ask Mr. Bowen if he can share any other related comments before you vote.
Thank you, Dr. Shandor. Uh, Mr. Richardson, members of the board. You'll recall at the May work session, I provided an update on the 2126 Capital Improvements Plan. Um, as Dr. Carroll mentioned, the plan, um our funding has been revised. Uh, it was initially approved at 13.2 million dollars, 12.7 million would have been funded by the county. So in response of the pandemic and the loss of um revenues on the county side, the county administrator has advised us that our CIP will be funded now at $1 million beginning July 1, 2020. So uh staff is currently working on updating a new document. We should have that document published by the end of the month.
Thank you, Mr. Bowen.
Thank you. Is there any additional questions or comments from board members?
I, I just have one real quick question. Um, with having to push off the capital uh uh programs now for a year because of the uh pandemic and the change in the um funding for it, does that put us at any more, at any additional financial liability, having to push off things for a year?
That's a great question. Uh, Mr. Higginbotham, we actually have one uh project that we had signed a contract for, that was for the York High School Roof Project. And we have pushed that project. We delayed that project, uh which was supposed to begin this summer and on, on funds that had already been approved. But uh in our reprioritization of projects, we needed that funding uh to, to complete year two of the Grafton Project. So we'll be looking in the next bu- uh budget cycle for CIP in the fall uh to address the YHS Roof Project for um for next summer.
And Mr. Higginbotham, I'd, I'd add that whenever you push projects out to out years, there's resulting inflation that uh just accrues with any project that you know you need to do.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Now, hearing no other comments, is there a motion and a second to approve Resolution 20 dash 25, a resolution of the County School Board of York County, Virginia to approve the division superintendent's revised fiscal year 2021 CIP program?
I move the resolution 20 dash 25.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Ms. Ford?
Yes, the motion was made by Mrs. Garoff and seconded by Mr. Myatt to approve Resolution 20 dash 25. Mr. Myatt?
Yes.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mrs. Garoff?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
And Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
The motion passed five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you. And next we're going to have the, or talk about the approval of Resolution 20 dash 26, resolution of the County School Board of York County, Virginia, creating a technology reserve fund to support the one-to-one technology initiative for grades K through 12 and approve the transfer of one-time end-of-year operating funds of 1 million and the transfer of one-time impact aid revenues of 2.2 million to the newly created Technology Reserve Fund. So Dr. Shandor, as you explained this, I want to make sure that you can cover for everyone too that may not understand. And I know the board members have had multiple questions. We all have that. Um, there's a big difference in reoccurring money that comes in every year and money that's a one-time cost. So I want to make sure that's, that's covered in your presentation.
Yes, i- it will be. That's correct. So um before we get to um C, D, and E, um I'm going to, before, I'm sorry, before Mr. Bowen gets to those uh other action items, I'm going to ask Dr. Carroll if he'll share some information related to the one-on-one initiative and then board members feel free to ask him any questions.
Thank you.
Dr. Carroll?
Thank you, Dr. Shandor. Uh, so in recent weeks, we've been meeting and talking about a one-to-one initiative, something that is uh has been around education for several years. Uh, we have uh not done it in the past because the significant commitment that has to be involved in, and usually you take a few years to do so, but we are forced with uh what we're looking at in the fall as far as unpredictability and the ability to uh deliver new uh learning to our students to have to really significantly look at this. And so we've put a group together and we are endeavoring in that process. We are planning this using the 15 characteristics that have been found in effective one-to-one uh uh rollouts. Uh, one of the biggest problems that you normally have is establishing the why, talking to your stakeholders, uh your employees, the community about the additional costs that has to go in to ensuring uh of why you do this as an addition uh to your new learning. But we believe the COVID pandemic uh has established that why for us. Uh, we've established a framework with deadlines on how to get this uh work done and um delivered before uh the labor, the traditional Labor Day start of school. We've established what device features that would be most desired and we're trying now to match those uh with our curriculum needs and with our student developmental needs. A K through two student is going to need a different device than a high school student. We've established some, but not all of the funding and some of that's going to be involved in these items that, that follow my presentation. And we're working to identify all the sources as well as the most economical way to deliver high-quality instruction. We don't just want to settle for the cheapest or the uh device that just gets us over the bar. What really matches what we're trying to do. And we're developing inventory audits and a home survey uh to look at things like what, what devices can we already use to reduce our, our costs as we go into this? And also, and a really important part is what is our home access? How can we ensure that students who have a device can hook up to the internet and do that with equity across the division? The next slide that I have uh just talks about some of the, some of the significant costs that we'll be looking into. So first, uh one-time money that, you know, can't be used in our recurring budget. Uh, some coming out of our revenue stabilization fund, some from end-of-year dollars from this current operating budget and uh CARES funding. Uh, we have been able to, to corral about 4.2 million of that. Uh, we also would have to rely on a student technology fund. What we're looking at right now over a four-year period would range from 2.1 to 3.6 million, depending on how we calculated that and how much we were charging our students to do so. I would say at this point that uh on the, in the instructional side of the house, at each of the uh levels of uh school, they're looking at where they compare down the uh student supply fees and the things that they're asked to bring to school to offset some of these costs. Some rough finger, figures that cannot, uh, we're still working on and trying to sharpen and to uh drive down and they're highlighted in red, or what we're looking at right now is devices costing about 2.2 million for all of our K-5 students. 1.6 for our sixth through eighth, about 2.1 for nine through 12. Uh, we do, um, we are looking at teacher device cost, which would be about a half million. Uh, infrastructure costs to be the backbone of this, FY 21 is about a million and FY 20, 1.2 million. We're hoping to um recapture some of those costs through some efficiencies in storage if students are now using their devices instead of ours. And then we would be looking to use a lot of their uh existing uh inventory. So if you're looking at a 90% use of that, uh keeping some to the side for use of um of loners uh for, we're going to have significant break fix when you're talking about people transporting computers back and forth. We hopeful, hope to offset some of those red numbers with about 1.4 million of devices that are currently in inventory. We're also looking at federal title grant funding to see if there's any of those dollars that we can use for our Title I students um that may go towards the technology fee. And then there may be some other efficiencies if we can identify other inventory that is sitting in the schools that was purchased by the schools but not the division. And then also, um, while the devices are expensive because we're going to have to put a four-year warranty on it, uh would there be families that would want to, that either could opt out because they already have a device that uh qualifies to the minimum specifications? Or with our advan- advantageous pricing, would families be interested in purchasing without a warranty? They would accept the risk, but they could purchase the unit as opposed to paying the technology fee. That would count against us in the dollars we count for the tech fee, but we would be putting out less in the device costs. So that would be a net plus for us. Uh, so we're working on all of these, trying to maximize the funding and decrease the cost, but still hit the um, the uh developmental and curricular uh desires uh of the division to get a high-quality education for all of our students and to ensure that we can uh continue new learning, where we haven't been able to do that on all of our levels this year. So I'm uh happy to take any questions if you have any.
Just uh one question or maybe comment, um that the devices are different between the different age groups. For example, a kindergartner wouldn't be, couldn't use a laptop, but uh they'd be more apt to use uh an iPad or a Chromebook or something of that nature. Is that correct?
Right. When I talk about developmentally appropriate, that's a perfect example that iPads would be used probably in the lower uh grades. Uh, we want to be able to make sure that our students are able to use uh Microsoft Office, especially at the upper grade levels. So we need a device that's going to be able to handle the full use of that. So those are the types of things that we're wrestling with right now.
So just lots of variables to consider. And it sounds like y'all are considering all the variables. I mean, from the, the topics you've covered and the topics you've, you've talked about, um, it sounds like y'all are on top of it, but thank you for that hard work.
Thank you. Mr. Richardson, one thing I'd like to add, um, and Dr. Carroll touched on it, was about the funding piece. Um, one of the reasons why we're able to do this is because uh we do have one-time dollars that are available um with end-of-year dollars this year because schools have been closed, because we're saving on utilities, saving on fuel, saving on some overtime. Uh, we're good, we're, we do expect to have a higher-than-normal uh balance at the end of year. Typically, when we have those balances, they come back to us. We ask the county to reappropriate those dollars to us and they, and they historically have done so. And those dollars we ask for them to be used for one-time items like buses for technology, for textbooks and for capital projects. So again, we're staying in line with, with using these end-of-year dollars for one-time projects. Um, and then what we'll do over the next uh four, four or five years is we'll work in our operating budget to make more uh a line item for more sustainable funding for the one-to-one initiative. Um, the other thing I'd like to say is, um, is a thank you to the county. Um, they knew that we were struggling with this process. They, they knew we had this new mandate to deliver instruction virtually. And um uh they actually shared with us a million dollars of their CARES Act funding to be deposited into our Technology Reserve Fund. they actually shared with us a million dollars of their CARES Act funding to be deposited into our technology reserve fund. So thank you to the county for that.
Great.
It certainly has taken a big relief off of us in trying to make these dollars work.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mr. Bowen. Any other comments or questions from board members on the one to one initiative?
I mean, obviously, when you're rolling out a huge initiative like this, doing it over a larger period of time would be ideal. Are we in communications with other school divisions who've rolled out so that we can kind of learn from some of their mistakes, if you will, making those same ones?
I'm sorry, please, please finish.
No, I I'm done.
Okay. Yes, we have been as and as close as Williamsburg, James City, and as far away as DC. We've also been look talking to divisions that not only that are similar, but also using the same format. The Canvas platform that you've heard discussion about recently, which is our learning management platform, but also Aspen, which is our grading program. So we're talking to divisions about that marriage and how that works.
So one question in addition to that, since Ms. Geralt's brought it up. Mr. Bowen, weren't you in a division where they had the one to one initiative or purchased devices for people in the in the division?
Yes, sir. In Henrico County, we had a one to one initiative there.
I thought we talked about that in passing some some time ago. So that's great that you're you're familiar with it. So you know where the dollars need to go and how much how many dollars we need. So that's that's very beneficial.
I I think it is important to emphasize the initial startup of this, you know, that it's it's one time money. And so if you read the the item there under the action, the one time money from end of year dollars, the one time money related to impact aid and the gracious support from our county, from Mr. Morgan giving us a million dollars from their CARES Act funding. So I think it's very important for the community and our staff member to understand that that is not a part of our operating dollars. It is completely separate than that. So want to make sure that that we're very clear on that. The other thing I want to do is, you know, we have a lot of folks on a lot of different committees right now and a lot of task forces. I've shared with board members earlier, there's a lot of a number of projects and multiple people are on in on different projects. The work that Dr. Carol's done to lead this with Bill and the finance aspect of it and with Ms. Skinner and the academic and instructional team in getting feedback from principals and all those types of things has been wonderful. To Ms. Geralt's point, you're trying to implement something that's typically a three year implementation, best practice, roll out slow pilot, et cetera. You know, we're we're in a different, it's a different ballgame for us right now. We were directed from the state superintendent a few weeks ago in a meeting to, you know, prepare for the worst. And and quite honestly, I think take this and use this as an opportunity to, and I think many of our teachers and many of our families and kids have really adapted well. There are going to be challenges moving ahead with this, as you can understand that. But just like anything, I think we'll work through it. We'll be better on the other side of this. And I appreciate the work of crafting these numbers. But again, I would emphasize that this is a draft that we're still, Mr. Bowen's still sharpening his pencil when it comes to these things and Dr. Carol's still leading that team to get to the point where we're we're ready. But the next three items in the agenda will address this topic. So I appreciate your work.
Thank you, Dr. Shandor. And I did make a comment, I think, when we discussed this initially before we'd gotten more details that y'all were exploring the one to one that Loudoun County had kicked off their one to one initiative right when the pandemic started and they closed schools, I think within like two weeks and it crashed the first week and it crashed the second week. I haven't heard any more after that. So it's 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 very difficult task to do. But I think the way we're doing it, at least we're exploring it, you know, taking whatever time we can, even though it's it is in short order, like Ms. Geralt said. It sounds like y'all have a good handle on it.
I would I would agree with that, Mr. Richardson. I think we do. And in summer, when we have our summer program, there's going to be a virtual format. I know from from understanding from Ms. Skinner and Dr. Butler, they've talked about, you know, the teachers they hired for that summer program, and a lot of them are some of our best of the best with technology and and how they're in families and instruction in our current environment. So we're really going to use, you know, our people as resources. And we also understand there's folks on the other side who are still, you know, learning to adapt to this. So so we're going to make sure that we're we take our time, we understand where people are and help them get better utilizing these tools as we move forward.
Wonderful. Any other comments or questions? I'm finished. I don't have any other comments.
I I just want to say I appreciate the ability to differentiate between the things like, I mean, normally without the pandemic, you know, the budget had been approved and been sent to the Board of Supervisors, you know, a couple of months ago. And then with with the school closure and the change in tax revenue, we have to go back and revisit it, which is completely separate than from the one to one technology thing, just with so many different balls up in the air that have never happened before. It's just, it's been very clear, the expectations and the goals that the division is putting out. And I just appreciate you guys taking the time to explain it so succinctly, but completely answering the questions. And I know we've given you a ton of questions. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Hearing no other comments or questions, is there a motion to approve Resolution twenty dash twenty six? The creating a technology reserve fund to support the one to one technology initiative for grades K through twelve and to approve the transfer of one time end of year operating funds of one million and the transfer of one time impact aid revenues of two point two million to the newly created technology reserve fund.
I move to approve Resolution twenty dash twenty six.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, Ms. Ford?
Yes, the motion is made by Mr. Higginbotham and seconded by Mrs. Geralt to approve Resolution twenty dash twenty six. Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Ms. Geralt?
Yes.
Mr. Maya?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion passed five to zero.
So the next resolution is a motion and a second to approve the Resolution twenty dash twenty six for the York County School Board of York County, Virginia, creating the technology reserve fund to support the one to one technology initiative for grades K through twelve and to approve the transfer of one time end of year operating funds of one point. Let me see where we're at. End of year operating funds of one million and the transfer of one time impact aid revenue of two point two million to the newly created technology reserve fund. Is that correct, Ms. Ford?
I think that's the one we just did, sir.
Yes, we need to do item D.
Item D. Yep, I have it twice here. Sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, you're right. We're on twenty dash twenty seven, Resolution of the County School Board. I apologize for the request of the County School Board, the County Board of Supervisors to approve the technology reserve fund and to use the impact eight dollars to be transferred to the tech reserve fund. So it's just a resolution to authorize the or ask the the County Board of Supervisors to approve that.
Move to approve Resolution Resolution twenty dash twenty seven.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, a motion is made by Mr. Maya and seconded by, was that Mr. Higginbotham or Mr. Schaefer?
Mr. Schaefer.
Okay, I'm sorry. Y'all went so fast that time. To approve Resolution twenty dash twenty seven. Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Ms. Geralt?
Yes.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yeah.
Mr. Maya?
Yes.
And Mr. Richardson?
Yes. And Dr. Shandor, I apologize. I didn't turn it over to you, but it was pretty self explanatory resolution just to ask the board to transfer that money for us is all the resolution is. So.
Okay, the motion passed five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you. So next is a consideration of approval of Resolution two dash twenty eight for the York County School Board authorizing the superintendent to enter into a four year lease purchase agreement for the purpose of initiating the one to one technology program for gates grades K through twelve. Dr. Shandor, I'll let you explain that.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Mr. Bowen is actually going to speak on the on this item.
Okay.
Thank you, Dr. Shandor, Mr. Richardson, and members of the board. This is a resolution this evening that authorizes superintendent to enter enter into a lease purchase agreement with VML VACO. They are a quasi governmental agency that we that we often use. And so what we're asking this evening is to enter to that agreement up to five million dollars. And the the lease payments, they'll be structured on a semi annual basis, but the total will come to about one point three million dollars annually. So how how we're going to fund the technology reserve fund is we're going to be using four point two million dollars in the immediate to fund the technology reserve and then we'll be making lease payments of one point three over the next four years. So we'll be spending the next four fiscal years to to increase the the technology reserve fund through what's ongoing student fees and then also through ongoing deposits from end of year or other one time funds. And then working again in our operating budget to establish a more dedicated and sustainable funding for that one to one initiative beyond the initial lease purchase period of four years.
And Mr. Bowen, just a question on that. That could be adjusted as well with grants or other things that we're in that question mark in that that slide you presented, correct?
That is correct. This is this is the max that we would enter into is five million dollars. It could be less. Yes.
Right. Worst case scenario.
Is there a benefit to being in a four year lease as opposed to another yearly increment?
Yeah. So if we if we go to a three year lease, the the lease payments increase. If we go to a five year lease, the lease payments decrease, but you really need to look at the technology from what we're leasing really has a about a four year on average lifespan, particularly when you have kids that are handling on on a daily basis. So we felt that we were comfortable with that with that four year period.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All right, hearing none. Is there a motion and a second to approve Resolution two dash twenty eight for the County School Board of York County, Virginia, authorizing superintendent to enter into a four year lease purchase agreement for the purpose of initiating the one to one technology program for all grades K through twelve?
I move for approval of Resolution twenty dash twenty eight.
Is there a second?
A second.
Mr. Higginbotham, a motion is made by Mrs. Geralt and seconded by Mr. Higginbotham to approve Resolution twenty dash twenty eight. Ms. Geralt?
Yes.
Mr. Maya?
Yes.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
And Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
The motion passed five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ford. And next, we're going to item F, a motion to authorize the purchase of the York County Dare Program supplies for total cost of the division not to exceed four thousand dollars. And if the cost exceeds four thousand, the Dare Program will reimburse the school division for any amount above that amount. This is something we typically do every year for the Drug Abuse Resistance Education Program in our schools. But Dr. Shandor, I'll let you share the information since we have new board members.
Yeah, I don't I don't have anything additional to add. I could just share that this program is for our fourth graders and seventh graders and the cost is for materials and supplies. Ms. Skinner, do you have anything else you'd like to add?
Good evening. No, that that's really all. It's it's a program that we offer to our fourth and seventh graders. It's a series of lessons and it really helps them learn how to make not just choices about drug resistance, but good life choices. And this is done through our court classes at Dale entry school, but then through our PE courses at the middle school level. So nothing else to add at this time.
Any other questions or comments from board members? Is there a motion and a second?
I move to approve to authorize the purchase of York County Dare Program supplies at a total cost to the school division not to exceed four thousand. And if the cost exceeds four thousand, the Dare Program will reimburse the school division any amount above four thousand.
Thank you, Mr. Higginbotham. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, Ms. Ford?
A motion is made by Mr. Higginbotham and seconded by Mr. Schaefer to approve the purchase of Dare Program supplies. Mr. Maya?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Higginbotham? Ms. Geralt?
Yes.
And Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
The motion passed five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ford. And next, we're going to move into our consideration of our motion to approve the FY twenty one health and dental insurance rates. Dr. Shandor?
I do. Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Mr. Bowen is actually going to share the three slides that we've shared with the board the last few months related to health insurance. So I'll ask if, all right, staff is right on it. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Bowen. Thank you, Dr. Shandor. Mr. Richardson and members of the board, if you recall, in February, Dr. Shandor and I presented the superintendent's proposed FY twenty one budget. And included in the presentation was an overview and update on the YCSD health insurance plan. So I'd like to take a few minutes just to review this information again. What was what was proposed in February for the health insurance plan has not changed. However, what has changed is the two percent employee compensation, which would have which would have offset much of the increase for most of the employees. However, we understand that moving forward with these changes will have an impact on our employees and families. However, we've experienced significant increases in our plan the past two years. It's left us really with no other choice but to increase rates. It's just unfortunate that the pandemic and the resulting loss of state and local revenues eliminated the employee compensation. And and but but we still are left with the issue and the problem with trying to sustain our health insurance reserve fund. So I wanted to just walk through again the history of the health insurance plan for fiscal years two thousand eleven to twenty over for a ten year period. In two thousand eleven, we had our plan with Anthem, Blue Cross, Bush Shield. And as you can see, and I'll just go over the employee only, the monthly cost of the plan was four hundred and five dollars. School Division was paying three hundred and sixty seven dollars a month and the employee was paying thirty eight dollars. So in FY twenty, the the plan increased five hundred and sixty eight dollars. Employee, the the employer was paying five hundred and twenty eight and employee was paying forty dollars. So over the course of ten years, what we've seen is the employer has picked up a hundred and sixty one dollars, the employee's picked up two dollars. And I would say even for the employer side, that is amazing because we've only seen a forty percent roughly increase over that time period, which has been very, very good. We can we can attest that to the the excellent experience that we've had in the plan. It's been a well managed plan. And then we've been able to keep those costs down for the employees, which is well below what we've seen in in other markets and particularly in our surrounding school divisions. So if we go to the next slide, so we went through a health insurance review with our consultant and we started to notice that health insurance costs were increasing. We've maintained a healthy reserve fund balance of about six million dollars, give or take. And over the past two years, the those those reserves have dwindled. Right now, we're about one point two million dollars. And so we need to do something. The consultant was recommending a twenty four percent increase. And when you look at the cost, just go to the far right, you can see for the school division, we were going to absorb a hundred and twenty seven dollars a month and the employee was going to absorb only nine dollars a month. This was this was not affordable. This was not affordable to the school division at all. So what we did is we looked at the plan we currently had. We talked to the consultant. We looked at options about, you know, cost saving measures, and we tried to understand what was causing this problem. Well, a number of things were causing it. We had more employees. We were hiring more employees because we were growing as a school division. We noticed because our plan is such a rich plan, we were seeing spouses and families come onto our plan. They were leaving, the spouse was leaving their plan at work and coming onto our plan because our plan was a very healthy and very rich plan. And then we've seen those employees now who have are on the plan were utilizing the plan more. So people are using the service more and as a self funded plan, you pay what you what you use. So we're actually paying the experience. So as the experience goes up, it costs us more and then which has resulted us using more of our fund balance and the reserve fund. So that kind of gives us an overview. We've also also seen some increase in cost. In two thousand nineteen, we shifted from Anthem to Cigna, and we did see some increase in costs as a result of discounts that were different between the Anthem plan and the Cigna plan. We are currently working with our consultant right now and in ways to change that, improve those discounts. And we have seen some movement with with some of the providers. However, there's still work to be to be done in that area. So when we look at the next slide, this is what the team settled on. We we took the FY twenty rates, we we increased the plan, the plan, which is the the five hundred and sixty eight dollars, we applied the ten percent. That was roughly fifty seven dollars. We adjusted what the employee and the employer would pay. So currently, the employee pays seven percent of the employee only. The employer pays ninety three percent. So just keeping it at the same ninety three, seven and seven percent structure did really not help us as as a school division. And then when we looked at other our comparative school divisions, we were seeing that our employees were still paying far less than what other school divisions were paying, including our county. So we needed to make some adjustments. So we needed to make some adjustments in those percentage contributions. And this was the proposal we came up with. So the employees now will pay $16 more a month. Our costs will be $41 more per month. And, and, and we had slight adjustments again to the percentage contributions. Now I will say that several years ago, we did add this health savings plan. And this, this plan really came as a result of all the increases. Coming out of the last recession and the introduction of Obamacare. Companies and school divisions, governments were looking at ways to control costs. So they started to introduce these health savings accounts. Health savings plans with health savings accounts. And what this really is, is a, an employee really managed plan. So it really requires more of the employees input and oversight of their own healthcare. And you can see as an attractive means to get folks to join this plan, the employee only premium is $0. So while we recognize that we're having to increase the plan for the OAP Cigna plan. We do have what we believe is still an affordable option, which is the high deductible health savings plan at zero cost per month to the employee. In addition to this, the school division provides $100 contribution, $1,200 for the year to their health savings account. So to give them some that seed money. So when they go to the doctor, they already have money in their account to help pay for the, for, for their costs. So I just wanted to provide again, an overview and kind of explain where we, where we, where we are and why we are here talking about health insurance. Again, it's unfortunate that the pandemic removed the sustainable funding from the operating budget, which would have, which would have supported the compensation. And that compensation would have offset some of these increases. But now that that compensation has been removed, we still have an issue and I would say a critical issue with our health reserve fund that needs to be addressed. And I'll be happy to answer any questions about the health insurance plan.
Any questions from board members?
Yeah, I'm sure you talked to, sorry, Mark. I'm sure you've talked to some other school divisions, like York County is not the only school division looking at increasing the cost of premiums to employees, correct?
Correct. That's correct. So some of our school divisions, we know of a local school division that went back out to bid. They, they actually had to change plans in order to get a no cost increase. We felt that we, we looked into going back out to bid. However, because we were taking compensation off the table, going back out to bid may require us to change providers again, which means employees might have to change doctors again. And we felt like that this just wasn't the time to do that because in the end, we didn't know what the result would be. Our consultant is still doing, you know, still working with the provider and, and trying to reduce costs where we, where we can. But there are a number of school divisions that are doing different things and it really depends on what's happening with their local funding. And, and what they've received in CARES Act funding, because some of them might be using large, you know, their large contributions from the CARES Act. To kind of offset that one, using one time dollars, which I, I say is a dangerous thing to do because. Once you use those one time dollars in, in, in an operating budget. That, that will come back to you and you have to make up for it again a second time. So we, we have seen a consistent, this is the second year that we've seen consistent and significant increases in utilization and costs from the health plan. And we really couldn't sit back any longer without taking some action to, to address the problem.
Thank you. Mr. Schaefer?
Yes. As you know, I've been. Probably one of the most vocal about opposing the increase when we couldn't give compensation. And I've grilled you guys about it, but as I've gone through and I've racked my brain trying to find a different route and ask all the questions, I haven't been able to find one. So I would have to say that this is probably the best way going forward that we can go. Until we can get a compensation increase.
And Mr. Bowen, the dental insurance rates are not increasing. Is that correct? They're maintaining?
That's correct.
Okay, good.
But I do thank you for everything that you've, you've presented and all the hard work you put into it.
And I would say just in our, in our study of, of our comparator school divisions, even by raising the rates as we did. We are still the lowest in just about every category when we compare ourselves to our comparators. Because not only does our, our plan have low premiums, but many of our surrounding school divisions have deductibles in their plans. Where they might have a $500 or even a $1,500 deductible, which means that first 500 or $1,500 they're paying out of pocket. So those are things that we could look to in the future with, with the county to adjust our plan, to, to institute a deductible. But again, we didn't feel that that was appropriate this time too, because that could also be a significant hit when you need to raise premiums and then you, you. Put into place a deductible. Cause again, those are, those are first time dollars out of the pocket.
We're still attractive for bringing teachers and other employees to our division because of that. So we're still. Ahead of everybody else with our benefits. That's good. Thank you.
Okay, just one other quick comment. And as you know, the other dynamic is the pharmaceutical dynamic. So pharma, in my own personal experience, is always a wild card. In a rebid and, and, and any other plan aside from the obvious care provider and, and keeping a doctor, so to speak. So the pharma pieces can also be a significant hit.
And that's, that's a great point because what was so attractive when we moved from Anthem to Cigna. Was the savings that we, we, we realized from the pharmaceutical restructure. So they restructured the formulary and we, that, we, we saved a lot of money, hundreds of thousands of dollars, both county and schools. So that was really the, the driving force behind that. We did save some administrative costs. The one thing that we couldn't see in the evaluation of the RFP were those discounts. And while we did see higher discounts, really what's driving the plan is the utilization and of course, the more people on the plan. So. It is an attractive plan and there's. You know, there, there are going to be more folks on our plan as we continue to grow. But we do need to make this more equitable in the cost sharing because what we would like to do is we would like to be able to provide a raise. Because it's more important, well, it's just as important for an employee to get a raise to offset the cost. But really the goal for our employees is to get them to a higher salary because their retirement is all based on a higher salary. So that's what we want to get to. We want to pay them more. We want to have an equitable share in the cost of the premiums for our health plan. And we want to make sure that when they retire, they're, they're one of the highest paid, you know, employees paid, paid teachers in the region.
Thank you, Mr. Bowen. Any other comments or questions from board members? If none, is there a motion and a second to approve FY 21 health and dental insurance rates?
I move that we approve the FY 21 health and dental insurance rates.
I second.
Ms. Ford?
Was that Mr. Maya? Did you take that one?
Let me have that one.
Okay. All right. A motion is made by Mrs. Groll and seconded by Mr. Maya to approve the FY 21 health and dental insurance rates. Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Ms. Groll?
Yes.
Mr. Maya?
Yes.
And Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
The motion passed five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ford. Lot of difficult decisions this evening with the pandemic and the, the cost of revenue and that sort of thing. But it's something that we, we have to make decisions on and we've got a good crew that's, I think that's working behind the scenes, doing what they can. But thank you for all your hard work on that. We have consideration of a motion to approve FY 21 pay plan. Dr. Shandor, do you have anything to share on that?
Yes, Ms. Richardson. I thank you for, thank you for acknowledging the, the difficulty in the, in the decisions. The three of you, new board members, you have stepped right into it as far as, you know, stepping into the fire, literally almost. And then now with COVID, so and, and the challenges that come with that. So we appreciate your questions and we appreciate your feedback as we move forward. So our, our last item here is H, motion to approve the, the FY 21 pay plan. I'll turn it over to Dr. Vladu to share information.
Mr. Richardson, members of the board and Dr. Shandor. Each year following the final approval of the operating budget, the school board votes on the pay plan for the upcoming fiscal year. As a reminder, the pay plan is based on the operating budget and any changes to the budget may be reflected in the plan. First, as presented in the May work session, as also the discussion tonight. As a result of the economic impact of the COVID-19 pandemic, the experience, the division experience decreases in state and local funding. As a result of these significant reductions, there are no increases to the salary schedules for the following employee groups, which include administrators. Teachers, non licensed employees, bus drivers, bus dispatchers and bus driver assistants. The division maintains its commitment to increase compensation. However, the current situation has impacted these plans and we hope to revisit these goals in the near future. Next, I will summarize the remaining changes to the plan into five categories. First, position regrades and compensation. Each year, the division engages in a cyclical review of compensation. This year, after a regional market analysis. Group one employees, which include bus driver assistants, custodians, school cafeteria workers, office clerks. Secretary one, school cafeteria managers, head custodians and secretaries twos. These positions were regraded to make them more competitive. As such, these employees will see an increase in compensation for the upcoming year. Next, as previously presented, the speech language pathologists were moved from the teacher's salary scale and added to grade 28. To make these hard to fill positions more competitive. The second category are new positions. So first, as per the special education program evaluation recommendation, we have added an associate director of student services. The second and last new position is an, in an increase to cheerleading assistance at the high school level from one to two assistants. The third category of changes are additional clarifications of hours and days. First, the transportation area supervisor increased from 245 to 260 days. This makes the position more competitive when neighboring school divisions and there's a need for these positions throughout the year. There are a couple of changes to school bus drivers and school bus driver assistants for hours as it relates to summer school. The next category of changes are FTE conversions. And as a reminder, these are budget neutral positions. First, in the finance department, the position of account analyst was converted from another position. The second and last change in this category was the addition of a records manager from the conversion of the school board office manager position. The last category of changes are deletions from the pay plan. First, we removed the 7.5 hours per day from the teacher's salary scale. These designations were confusing as the US Department of Labor classifies teachers as professional exempt employees. Second, we remove grades one and two from the pay plan as the starting rates for these positions were below the minimum wage requirements. Next, we remove the records manager supplement as this provision will be incorporated into the records manager compensation pay. Lastly, we remove the master mechanic boilerman position. This position is unfilled and was left over in the appendix from FY 19. So I want to recognize Ms. Tara Fowler, the division compensation specialist for doing the work behind the scenes to make this report possible. At this time, this concludes the changes to the pay plan and I can take any questions you might have.
Are there any questions from board members or comments? Hearing none. Is there a motion and a second to approve FY 21 pay plan?
Move to approve the FY 21 pay plan?
And I will second.
Thank you, Mr. Schaefer for that second. Ms. Ford?
Yes, a motion is made by Mr. Maya and seconded by Mr. Schaefer to approve the FY 21 pay plan. Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Maya?
Yes.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Ms. Groll?
Yes.
And Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
The motion passed five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ford. So policy discussion and policy first reading, we have none. And we're going to move on to policy second reading that we have in two action items. The first one is a second reading of the proposed changes to policy CDQ. The National Transportation Safety Board Bus Driver Principal Performance Self Reporting Recommendations. That's a mouthful. Dr. Shandor, are there any additional changes since last month?
No, Ms. Richardson, no changes since last month.
Thank you. I just need a motion and a second to approve the second reading of this change to policy CDQ. The National Transportation Safety Board Bus Driver Physical Performance Self Reporting Recommendation.
Motion to approve a second reading of proposed changes to policy GDQ.
Or second? All right. Thank you, Mr. Maya for that second. Ms. Ford?
Yes, a motion is made by Mrs. Groll and seconded by Mr. Maya to approve the second reading of policy changes to GDQ. Ms. Groll?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Maya?
Yes.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
And Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion passed five to zero.
Thank you, Ms. Ford. So next we need a motion to approve the second reading of policy GB and GBA dash or slash JFHA extending investigations timelines. But Dr. Shandor, are there any additional changes to that policy?
No, Ms. Richardson, no changes since last month. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you. So is there a motion and a second to approve that policy reading?
I move if we approve the second reading of policy.
I move that we approve the second reading of policy in GBA.
I think Ms. Gerrots had started before you, Mr. Schaefer.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Ms. Gerrots.
Did I get it all in there?
Almost.
All right. Motion to approve second reading of policy GB and GBA dash JFHA.
Thank you. Mr. Schaefer?
Yes, I will second it.
Ms. Ford?
Yes, the motion was made by Mrs. Groll and seconded by Mr. Schaefer to approve the policy reading of GB and GBA JFHA. Mr. Maya?
Yes.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Ms. Groll?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
The motion passed five to zero. Thank you.
I don't want to forget the superintendent's report because it's not highlighted on my sheet here. I just want to make sure I cover that. So that is next. So Dr. Shandor, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. I just have a couple of items this evening. I, I'm going to do the first topic around graduation because I know there were some, some commentary from the board members during board matters earlier. I'm going to ask Dr. Butler if he'll please come onto the screen. He was a part of a regional task force regarding graduation and also led the efforts here in the school division. Dr. Butler?
Thank you, Dr. Shandor, for this opportunity to provide an update. For our graduation for 2020, as you know, due to the COVID closing and certain things, our students did not have the option for traditional graduation. So we were able to pull together a task force, which included students from all four of our high schools as well as parent representatives. We also were able to have faculty members, the senior class advisors from those schools and the senior, the principals from those schools, along with certain school board office staff. Mrs. Angie Siders, Dr. Hartley, Mr. Dolek, as well as Catherine Goff from our PR department. And so we were able to sit down and, and work through several options. Some of the limitations we did have was due to the governor's order. Certain options that we wanted to consider were not feasible. And so the committee worked really hard and I have to really commend the students and the parents because they came, they gave us good feedback. In addition to their feedback, they helped us develop a survey that was sent out to senior families and students to get some feedback on how we should guide our process. And so from that feedback, our students really had three main things that they really wanted to make sure that they could see for graduation this year. One was to make sure that they could walk across the stage and share that experience with their peers, that their families would be able to see them at that ceremony. And also that they would also be able to let their families also view it as well. So based on that information, we were able to come up with the recommendation to have driving and commencement services. And they really valued having it here in York County. They said many of our students really had a connection to our school division. Particularly to Bailey Field where many of their athletic events and different activities occurred. The same thing for our students up in the Bruton Zone, since they use that venue for their athletic events and different activities. And so that's how we were able to derive that recommendation to you, Dr. Shandor, is from all those different feedback loops and also from the feedback from our committee members.
Do you guys have any questions for Dr. Butler?
Thank you, Dr. Butler, for all that hard work. I know it's been a lot, and it's ever changing. But thank you for all that. It's, I know it's been a lot.
I just have a comment. As a parent of a senior, I appreciate the fact that we have a plan, and we know what's going to happen, and we're ready to go, and we can plan and start getting excited for that. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Butler. I appreciate that. And I appreciate the work that that committee spent a number of weeks, again, reviewing a lot of information. Our high school principals had a lot to think about. And, you know, our thoughts go out to all of our seniors as they lost, you know, the last nine weeks of their year and a number of different things. But we are certainly going to try to make this a memorable experience for them. I know the principals are working hard to try to develop what that's going to look like at the schools as well as for this graduation. So just a couple other topics I wanted to share. A few board members mentioned this earlier. I had the opportunity with Ms. Richardson to join in on the celebration for SEDEXO and our YCSD team members who are, we recognize them for serving over a hundred thousand meals. I certainly want to commend all of our operation staff. Again, you mentioned Cheryl Parr, and there's a number of other folks who are helping support this. We've had bus drivers, custodians, a number of folks outside of the the food service people involved in some fashion, whether carrying the meals to to their cars or whatever their role is, delivering meals to families that can't come to the schools. So I really want to thank them for their outstanding dedication, their commitment to our students, going over and above to make these things happen. The other item I want to share with the board just briefly, Dr. Carroll has led some work related to a restart committee. As you can imagine, we're already thinking about summer and next fall. I have a little bit of information to share, obviously not a lot of details yet, but our restart committee started about a month ago. They've met a few times a week. Since that time, number of issues they're working on is looking at scheduling options. So they're trying to map out whatever phase we're in, or whatever the governor is allowing us to do, how are we going to prepare for that stage that we're in? So whatever that looks like, we're preparing for multiple ways of restarting the school year next year. We're also looking at what measures must be in place during the school day for employee and student protection. So the team's working through that. Also coordinating with closing out spring activities like student property return, graduations, and those types of things. So a lot of work's going on. We've also looked at transportation changes. So there's a number of things that we're looking at our reentry plan. Dr. Carroll's also sat on some of the superintendent calls. There was a committee across the state that put together a thirty-page document for reopening schools for next year. We have a draft of that thus far. So we are, I have a call tomorrow morning, actually, with the with the state superintendent in the group across the state related to opening and funding. So we will continue to try to update the board as much as we can with the information that we have. But we don't have anything firm yet, because a lot of it's going to really determine where we are when that time comes. Last but not least, I did want to share that, again, we have, on Tuesdays, every Tuesday, we meet with the state superintendent. Tomorrow is going to be a lot about budget impacts and restarting the school year. With that, that concludes the superintendent's report. And I would just, again, want to shout out to all of our IT guys behind the scenes and our video folks who who've helped us put these meetings together. Thank you so much, guys. We appreciate all the work that you're doing. And Ms. Ford, with your work with the with the school board members and helping us all be prepared for the all of the school board meetings. And I look forward to, I'm not sure how the weather's going to look this week, but I know board members, we have plans to get out and visit our seniors in the month. We will schedule those, weather permitting, or we'll get umbrellas, and we'll still make those deliveries. But again, this concludes the superintendent's report. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Shandor. So we'll have our next virtual special meeting on Monday, June the first at 5:00 p.m. And then our next meeting that was is typically scheduled, and we already had scheduled on the calendar, is for June the 12th. So board members, I'd just like you to look at your calendars, and if you can text me or email me and let me know individually, if maybe June 15th may work better, that's a Monday, and a time, if we need to do it earlier, we need to do it at 5:00 o'clock, that's fine, too. We typically do that meeting in June during graduation. In between the graduations, we'll have the actual meeting at, we used or had had it in the past at William and Mary Hall. But since we're doing the graduations, that's one of the dates is tentatively are set right now for June 12th, weather permitting, at nine and at six, it'll be difficult to try to squeeze a meeting in there during that day. So I'm going to make the suggestion that we may try to move that to Monday, the 15th. If you can just let me know if there's a problem, one way or the other, and I'll get with the superintendent probably tomorrow or the next day, and we'll adjust that date. So the public will know plenty of time ahead of time when that meeting will be. So other than that, everyone have a great week, stay safe, and thank you. We're now adjourned. Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.